All right, let me call to order the Independent School District Number 283 School Board Meeting for April 8th, 2019. It's about 7:25. I want to apologize for running a little bit late. We had a pre-meeting and that just lasted a little longer than we had anticipated. First up is approval of the agenda. The agenda begins with the superintendent's report. Then we have several study session topics. Strategic Plan Report, Strategy Number Four, Start Times, Discussion, Curriculum Review Process, Self-Insurance Employee Health Benefits Plan, Policy Development, First Reading Policies, 801 Equal Acquiesce to School Facilities, and 810 Naming of Facilities. Policies Development, Second Reading Policies, 719 Student Insurance Program, and 721 Memorials and Memorial Activities for Deceased Students and Staff. We have our Consent Agenda, followed by the Action Agenda. On our Action Agenda, we have Start/End Time Recommendations, and we have Policy Development, Second Reading Policies, 719 Student Insurance Program, and 721 Memorials and Memorial Activities for Deceased Students and Staff, followed by Communications and Transmittals, and Adjournment. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Moved by Karen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Carrie, 7-0. First up is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Chair Gores, members of the board. This evening from my superintendent's report, I would like to share some information connected to our district mission. And I would like to start off by acknowledging and congratulating Steve Schmitz, who was recently, he recently found out that he is one of nine finalists for the 2019 Minnesota Teacher of the Year Ceremony. And I would like to acknowledge Steve and the other eight teachers from across the state who were acknowledged. We're extremely proud of Steve. If you, if you know, if you recall, Steve was one of forty semifinalists that was selected by an independent panel of leaders in the areas of education, business, and government, and nonprofit businesses. So this year, there were 168 teachers as a part of the process, which is the third most in the program's history. So we're extremely excited. The announcement will be made on May 5th at the River Center, and I'm confident that Steve will have a large contingent of St. Louis Park staff, community, parents, and everyone rooting him on. I would also like to make sure that everyone is aware that this week is the week of the young child. So here in St. Louis Park, we have several different activities throughout the week designed and highlighted to make sure that we're celebrating our youngest learners. As you can see, today was Music Monday. Tomorrow will be Tasty Tuesday. Wednesday, we'll work together. And Artsy Thursday and Family Friday. And as we know, learning starts from birth, and I'm extremely proud of the work that we do here in St. Louis Park to meet the needs of all of our learners. Lastly, I would just like to take a moment to acknowledge the students and staff that over spring break participated in the Civil Rights Research Experience through Arts Us. If you recall, in the past, this was something that we did with the West Metro Education Program, and now we're currently working through Arts Us. And I would like to thank Dr. Leanne Stevens, who over the past several years has worked to take a group of students on this experience. And in front of you, you'll see that we had, there were thirty-seven students across the metro area that participated. We had ten students participate. There were students from Wayzetta, students from St. Anthony, New Brighton, and there were a group of kids that were from multiple school districts that participated through the Science Museum. And on the left, the students had an opportunity to stand on the steps where the summer march began, and they stood with Joanne Bland, who marched on Bloody Sunday. In the middle, or on the far right, you'll see the pulpit in which Dr. King gave his last speech. So our students had an opportunity to be in the Mason Temple in Memphis, Tennessee, and stand and be present in that space. And in the middle, which is probably the most impactful part of all of this experience, that our students had an opportunity to process and reflect on their learning experiences. And one of the things that Dr. Stevens was most inspired by is that she said that there are students that have a hard time engaging in their daily activities here at school that were completely engaged throughout the whole time and really found this to be a valuable learning experience, and really reinvigorated their excitement for learning and for school. And I would say that just speaks to the work that we're doing here in the Strategy One around culturally relevant instruction and the need to make sure that our students are experiencing and, you know, hearing counter-stories as it relates to history in this country. So that concludes my report for this evening. And I would just add that on April, I'm sorry, on May 13th, on my May 13th Board Meeting, the students who participated in this experience will be here to provide a report to the School Board.
Thank you. I would just say that we're hosting the BAR Conference here in St. Louis Park on Thursday and Friday. And having looked at the agenda, Steve Schmitz, our nominee as Teacher of the Year, and his students are performing at several opportunities during that conference. It'll be fun to be able to share, hopefully we'll share his nomination at the time that his students are performing.
Absolutely.
Right. Next up for the study session topics, we're going to begin with the Strategic Plan Report, Strategy Four, Start Times, and Discussion.
Chair Gores, members of the board, it's my pleasure this evening to provide a high-level overview of the work that's been done over the past several months as it relates to strategy regarding start times. And I would, I would just like to first start off by thanking the project team members, the group of teachers, staff, community members, students that came together and invested a lot of time and energy in developing the recommendations that are in front of you this evening. I really appreciated the opportunity to learn with them and to really wrestle through some tough conversations about what was the right direction to move forward to meet the overall health, academic, social, and emotional needs of all of our students. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank all of our community members, our parents, and the public who provided input and feedback over this several-month period. I think that that input and feedback that was provided was extremely valuable and really helped to influence, ultimately influenced, the recommendations that were made. For the purpose of this presentation tonight, I would like to just highlight the recommendations, talk about the revised, talk about a revised status quo option that was recommended, and then really open it up for discussion and to hear from each of you. But before I do that, I would like to provide some, an overview of the timeline. So what you'll notice here is that in October, we started with the recruitment and application process to really develop that team I was just talking about. And we had our first meeting in November, and from there, which was really about just grounding who we are as a group and developing norms and making sure that we were all on the same page moving forward. And in December, we came together and reviewed local data and research. And in January, we spent time getting input from our community. So we had over twenty-two different public meetings where we went out and got input about what the start time should look like, and that really led us to the development of the initial recommendations that were made. In February, we spent time reviewing those, that input that we received and developing the options, those initial options, and went back out in the community and went out and had over twenty-six different stakeholder meetings throughout the community to get, to gather feedback on those initial options that were developed. In the month of March, we spent time as a project team reviewing that feedback, and the feedback that we received initially, I mean, led to the, to two recommendations that we, that we provided you, Option Triangle and Option Square. And, you know, between the month of March and, and we had several different meetings, multiple community meetings, I know there was a board listening session, and engaged with the public via email and thought exchange to continue to get input and feedback about the options that were presented. And this evening, I just want to spend some time going over those recommendations. As I mentioned before, the project team ultimately landed on two recommendations, one of them being Triangle, which is a three-tier model similar to our current tier system here in St. Louis Park, which is a three-tier system. And what's unique about this recommendation is that all of our elementary schools are together on the first tier, and our middle school was moved to the third tier. You see the times listed there connected to each of the schools, and that was one of the options. And I would say, in many respects, while as a project team, we didn't have 100% consensus that this was one of the options that the project team, I would say probably preferred even over the square option as a whole. The second option, square option, is kind of a, it's a, it's a change from what our current practice is, as it's a two-tier option. And what you'll see is with this option, similar to Triangle, has all of our elementary schools on the first tier together. And then on the second tier, has both our middle school and our high school on that tier, on the second tier, with a 8:45 start time respectively. And I would say why the project team at the time was leaned more towards Triangle was just the cost difference. You see the projected costs connected to this one at one point, almost close to 1.5 million, and the projected cost with the Triangle total, I mean, would be, I'm sorry, I should back up and say, with this, it would be at least between 50 and 600,000, $500,000 and $600,000 increase in cost for us regarding transportation. And with this, it would be under $100,000 increase in cost. And I think that, you know, was certainly in the consideration of the project team members as, as we made those recommendations. As we, as we moved through the process, the School Board, you all requested that we come up with a status quo option. And the original status quo option that was recommended to the Board was a cost-neutral option that would keep the middle school starting at the same time, would keep the high school starting at the same time, would alter the Park Spanish Immersion start time to start five minutes early, but would push back the start time of our IB schools by fifteen minutes. And with discussion and, you know, receiving information from the Board, the Board asked to see another status quo option, and another status quo option would keep all of our school start times the same. And I should probably back up and say, these revised options were offered to the Board if the Board had, if the Board decided to do nothing, right? If the Board decided to keep the current start times because the Board did not find the option Triangle or Option Square as viable options. This option, the main difference between the two are the, is that this option keeps all of our elementary schools starting at the same times that they currently start at. I would also like to mention that there is a cost difference. If we, right now, the projected cost increase would be $150,000, but if we look at it in comparison to Triangle, I think it's about a $60,000 or $70,000 difference. So that's just something to take into consideration. So again, I didn't want to spend a lot of time, because I know that we've, we've talked about each of these options in great detail over the past couple of months, but I did want to just open it up for questions right now as it relates to the options and as it relates to both of those status quo, well, the revised status quo and the status quo option that I presented.
Could you just comment again if we went with the more expensive square option? Where would we get the additional money?
Yeah, so the piece about all of these, both of these recommendations is that both of these recommendations and the costs associated with both of these recommendations are directly connected to our general fund. As you all are aware, there are multiple pots of money as it relates to our transportation budget. The primary source of funding for transportation is through our general fund. So to your, to your question, the money would come from the general fund. And being that humans are the largest part of our general fund, right now, as we look at it, we're, we're believing that that would be somewhere where we would look at our general fund budget, particularly connected to our, our staffing.
So just a quick request as we're probably sharing these later. On the last slide, you may just want to say projected incremental cost?
Yeah.
Just because the other ones show the total.
Absolutely. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Could you clarify what the, for the status quo option or the revised status quo option, would there be a transfer for the PSI students on different buses? Will they be on their own buses? How are we going to be getting those students to Cedar Manor?
Thank you.
Old Cedar Manor.
So with both of these options, the revised and status quo and then the status quo option, neither one of those options would require students to transfer buses to get to Cedar Manor. Our transportation consultant did provide us a third status quo option that, that was cost neutral, that required the transportation, but we did not feel that that was a viable option. And I know that the Board did not feel that was a viable option as well.
So Aston, is that the end of your presentation?
Yeah, for the purpose of this evening, I wanted to just keep it pretty short and highlight the options and then the recommendations and provide a brief overview and timeline as I know that we've spent a lot of time discussing the process and question, responding to questions related to the recommendations.
You know, Aston, can you talk a bit, I know the district's going to work hard to make whatever we do work. I understand that. But can you talk with us a little bit about what we've, this is what I've learned, having listened to all these presentations and having kind of checked in with folks in Edine and Wayzetta, who've made a change to move their elementary schools to start earlier. And what I have heard is, for the most part, while people thought it was going to be, they were, they were nervous at the start, most families have liked the change once they've lived with it, elementary families and other families. I have a neighbor who's one of those families, and she says it's so much easier with their elementary kids to get them up and get them going and getting out the door, whereas when they started later, they would be involved in a project, and it was hard to pull them away because they're awake and they're ready. But the other school districts, as I understand it, have had long wait lists for their childcare, and that has been one of the concerns that I've had as I've listened to this. Can you just talk with us about, about what the strategy for handling that challenge and why more time may be helpful?
Certainly. At our last board meeting, our last board meeting in March, we had a much more robust, lengthier presentation where we really unpacked many of the themes that had come up over the past couple of months as it relates to concerns connected to the recommendations. And really, there were three concerns that I would say we saw continuous themes around. One was school-aged childcare, which I'm hearing you reference. Another one was around middle school athletics or 7-12 athletics. And then the third theme that we saw kind of continually come up is bus safety, particularly with some of our youngest learners, bus stop safety, I should say, with some of our, particularly some of our youngest learners being at bus stops, you know, at 7:00 AM in the morning. And as it relates to school-aged childcare, we, that is something that we really spent a lot of time looking at how we could create a school-aged childcare model that met the needs of all of our families. What we heard is that right now, some families, because of our end time, they don't, they don't need, you know, childcare. So right now, we're examining and exploring what would it look like to have a two-tier childcare system where families could, you know, sign up till 4:00, 4:30, and then the normal six o'clock time. We're looking at how we can add additional targeted services programming or just additional programming to meet the needs of students after school. On the 16th, we'll be having a joint city council-school board meeting, well, this will be one of the topics. And I think, you know, we're even wondering or wanting to look at how could Park and Recs play a role in, you know, school-aged childcare. So to your question, we've spent quite a bit of time looking at this, but I also recognize that it's a significant challenge because one of the things here in St. Louis Park that we're very proud of is that we haven't had wait lists for school-aged childcare. And as a, as a parent of a child who uses our school-aged childcare programming, I know that is exceptional. And part of the reason that makes our school-aged childcare programming kids place exceptional is that there's some continuity with the staff, not only throughout a particular school year, but year after year, which really helps to build relationships with students and families. Not to go too far down the rabbit hole, but probably my son's favorite part of the day, right? So I recognize that this is something that we do an excellent job here. And part of the reason that we do an excellent job with school-aged childcare is because we're able to offer positions in that program that are full-time or benefit-earning positions, where we've seen other school districts struggle or have challenged with their wait list and being able to fulfill all of the needs is because they're offering part-time jobs, which in today's economy is very difficult to find people to fill those jobs. So one of the things we believe is that with time, you know, working with human resources and looking at how we can potentially pair jobs and doing other things, that we would have a greater possibility to retain as many benefit-earning positions so that we're able to keep the continuity and keep the exceptional programming that we have in kids' place while serving the needs of our community. That was a long way to get to your answer, I'm sorry.
No, that was, thank you, Aston. I anticipated Ken's question, sorry, Ken. You know, we could, I think it would be time, we've done this for, studied this for months, I think it would be time to sort of weigh in with sort of how we're weighing the pros and the cons and the considerations, and we'll get to an action item later, but I think now during this discussion, it would be time to have some discussion on this. I don't want to start as the chair, but I can if you want me to. Thank you, Karen.
So I, too, really appreciated the time and effort of the task force team to really grapple with data options. I was really struck by the visual that they could not come to a consensus. That's why they landed on square or triangle. And that showed me that it was a really, really good process in action, and they truly considered as many options as they could. So I want to thank that group of people for all that effort because it was a lot of work. I really want to thank the members of the community who came out to the listening session, who provided impact statements. I do want to note, though, I monitor the School Board hotline on Sundays, and nobody ever called about this topic. So there were some emails that we received, there was a lot of vocal commentary at the listening session that we hosted, but again, from a broad community standpoint, I didn't hear tons and tons from across the community. The thing that I was struck by going into this, and I had asked that the data be at one of our meetings, was our K-5 population is our biggest chunk of kids, and our middle schools are smallest chunk of kids. And just logistically, we're going to do all this change for the smallest group of kids. And for me, it wasn't the compelling sleep study stuff, that wasn't it. What really helped me move from needing to take an action as opposed to keeping status quo was our elementary principals saying, this is an opportunity to get at robust learning earlier in the day, especially in reading and math, which is what they really need to focus on, and tailor the other items that are important toward the end of the day. So when little kids are tired, they've already done their hard, hard work early in the day when they're ready to do it. So for me, that was exactly the compelling reason that why it's time for a change. And the fact is, the team recommended make a change, don't stay with the status quo. We have administrative support for that, and so I really, I do want the community know, we have grappled with this for hours and hours, every single possible way of figuring out how to do busing, that question, it's been asked, folks. And I kind of felt bad for our bus expert because he was grilled repeatedly. And any little tweak on, yeah, I thought about that, here's how much it's going to cost, and that's what it boils down to. It is ultimately our responsibility to serve all of our students with the means that we have to do that. So I am going to support the change to Triangle, and it's because it's an opportunity to do some robust academics with our youngest learners.
Karen said a lot of what I was going to say. The elementary principals really teetered the needle on being able to get to the students at an earlier time of the day so where they're more awake and more intuitive about what's going on. A concern that I had was the athletics, to make sure that the middle school athletes could have the opportunity to still get to the high school. And I think that we can work that out. And then the other concern was the, was the childcare, of which we, we'll work it all out. We'll all figure it all out and over time. And I'm, I'm, I'm more in the wheelhouse of yes, definitely change, because status quo won't, it won't do the work, because this, I believe in this study too. But I also believe that we should go ahead and do it now so that, so that we can see and feel what that impact will be, and then make adjustments as we go along.
I also want to thank everybody who's been involved in this process, including the staff and the community members who have been on the, on the team, but also with all due respect, Karen, we did get a lot of emails, and there were, actually, the thought exchange was also really a valuable piece. I think a lot of, I just want to hold this up, a lot of the content in this book is feedback from community members. And I'd want to go back to, when I'm thinking about the really big picture, go back to the Morris Leatherman survey that we did. Morris Leatherman is a survey firm, very well-respected, and they surveyed 400 parents. And if you are a stats person or a data person, 400 parents out of a student population of about 4,500 is a huge percentage. And not only that, but that, that survey, that sample size was demographically representative of our community, of the number of English language learners that we have in our community by the geography of our school sites. So to me, that's a, that's a, that's a really representative sample that I, that I want to go back to just for a second. Because I think what we took, what we took away from that survey was that people were divided, that some people thought that elementary school, they wanted it early, some people, earlier, some people wanted it to stay the same. But what we really found, what we saw in that survey, that I think we all saw, and I know that the team saw as well, was that people wanted this sweet spot between eight and nine. They want, that pretty much everybody agreed that they wanted their schools to start between eight and nine. So if we look at our whole big picture, and we did grill the bus company about this over and over, is how do we get more of our kids close to that sweet spot with our, in our current sort of budget and geography of our, of our city? And what they came back with again and again was, you can't do it with middle school being first or high school being first because of our geography, because of the length of the day. Elementary school has to be first if you want to really shrink that time at all. So if we want to buy any time, I mean, we even saw it on the status quo. In order to do a cost-neutral status quo, we actually had to make the day 15 minutes longer on one end to keep our 7:30 free start time for our middle school. So in order to get even 15 minutes, and we've heard again and again, even a 15-minute change can be a valuable change. In order to even get that, we, I know Jim has asked this, can we get, can we get 15 minutes later in the middle school? We just kept hearing, we really can't without putting too much pressure on the system. So from a big-picture perspective, this is the way we get a little bit more efficiency in the system. It's not a ton, but it is something, and we wouldn't be able to do that another way. And then separate from that sort of practical consideration is this, is the research on our, on our teens and our adolescents and the impacts of the school start times on each age group. And I was actually at the middle school a couple of weeks ago in a sixth-grade classroom, first hour, and there was a girl sitting about as far away from me as Ken is, with her head on this, on the desk, so deeply asleep that it was actually hard to wake her up. It wasn't kind of dozing, it was asleep. And we do see a lot of evidence that our adolescents, that their circadian rhythms are just later. They, they can't go to sleep later. It's not every kid, but on average, on the whole. And then what we heard from our principals that our, that our elementary school kids come in ready to learn in the morning, early in the morning. It's not perfect, it's, it's never going to be the perfect thing. We don't have the resources to have everybody come at eight, 20, at 8:20, 8:30 like we would like, but this does get us closer to that, to that sweet spot. So I just want to take it back, as I always like to, to the mission and the core values. So part of our mission is to provide a safe and So part of our mission is to provide a safe and nurturing environment that energizes and enhances the spirit, and we have a core value that everyone has the responsibility and capacity to contribute to the well-being of others. So I support the triangle option because I can't ignore this reality that our system is currently not aligned with the sort of biological rhythms of a lot of our students, and it gives us the opportunity to create that more energizing environment for more of our students.
I think my favorite part of the Morris Leatherman survey was that 1% of respondents at the middle school thought they started too late. So there are two or three parents out there who want their middle schoolers to start before 7:30, but that was a rarity. I too want to thank the task force and the staff, and superintendent, parents and community members for weighing in on this. There's a lot of work that went into this, a lot of thoughts, a lot of permutations. I thank people for really challenging us, for challenging the transportation consultant to think of, to think of new things and new ways of doing it. I favor a change to the triangle option as well. I was swayed by the science, and as was mentioned before, the Kids Place staff and the elementary school principals gave a lot of feedback that solidified my thought that we should make a move to the, to the option where middle school goes first, high school, and then, I'm sorry, elementary school goes first, then high school, and then middle school last. What has been alluded to a few times by board members and the superintendent was, should we be doing this starting this fall or the following fall? And where I sit on that is that, you know, if we have a clear plan in place with benchmarks and report-outs that are getting us to a right, to the right solution, to a solidified process, not everything's going to be perfect, whether we do it this fall or the following fall, but if we can feel better about it internally, and if the community members can feel better about it with a year, I feel like we should give it a year, do a revised status quo option year for the 1920 school year, and then move to the triangle option in the 2020, 2021 school year. I think that that makes some sense.
All right, well, I had a prepared statement, just because I want to make sure that the public knows that we didn't leave a single rock unturned, and I want to make sure I don't forget anything. So I thought we had a very thorough and open process. We have scrutinized all the possible education and health research, and we analyzed the experience of other school districts that have made changes. We have sought out extensive feedback from all the stakeholders in this decision, parents, teachers, and students. So I also give my sincere thanks to, especially the School Start End Times Project Team for the very thorough job that they performed, and I'd also like to thank everyone who gave some feedback in this process. Some have said maybe the process was flawed because the actual bus times weren't revealed until a little later in the process. That was partly just how the process was designed, so that we could agree on overall goals before we got too hung up on discussing bus times. I was okay with doing the process that way because I thought there'd be some wiggle room for any bus schedule that we came out initially. Unfortunately, it turned out because of constraints of money and bus route times and school day length, there wasn't much wiggle room, so we were kind of stuck with the bus schedules as they were. But if that was a flaw in the process, I think we did our very best to overcome that. We sought out additional ways to get feedback and gave extra time for feedback. And I think all the school board members and many others have gone back and revisited every assumption made during the process in light of the actual bus times. We've tried to think outside the box and see if any of the schedules could be tweaked for any possible option. We have listened to the heartfelt concerns of parents, especially elementary school parents, who think the bus times would be too early for their young child for a variety of reasons. But again, unfortunately, because of constraints of money, bus route timing, school programs, and differing family schedules, there's no solution that meets everyone's needs perfectly. Believe me, we have tried. My hope after this decision is made is that our St. Louis Park tradition, in our St. Louis Park tradition, we'll figure out how to work together to best support all our children and their many different needs. I guess I haven't mentioned it, I'm actually supporting the triangle option, which may be surprising, because I quoted somewhat recently that I might actually vote against it. That was not an indication that the case isn't overwhelming, that the triangle option's better. I think I just kind of caught during a period where it's giving some ideas, kind of one last gasp, like maybe we could delay the status quo back half hour and reduce the length of some school days, and that didn't quite pan out. That's just how obsessive I am, I think, if anything. I think I finally, at some point, that there was nothing else to think about or research, and for the ultimate obsessive compulsive person I am, that's quite, that's saying something. You know, especially as I teach statistics for a living, and I know how any study that anybody makes is flawed by preformed, pre-assumptions and other flaws in the study. So I went back and questioned everything, and in the end, there's no question, the triangle's the best option. I do however think it can be made even better by postponing a year of its implementation. I mean, we're bumping up on the end of the school year this year, and it's just tough to see everyone being able to give their best effort to do this before next fall.
So I will chime in with my extreme gratitude to the project team, to all of the staff and administration, and Superintendent O'Sai for their very long, very dedicated work. I think that between Sarah and Thompson and Superintendent O'Sai, I can't imagine you could have fit any more meetings, public meetings, into your schedule if at all possible. So thank you, everyone, for your commitment, your dedication. I want to start off by saying that none of this discussion is abstract for me. I have a freshman in high school, I have a seventh grader, and I have a third grader. So all of these decisions are impacting my family, my children, my life too, in a very real way. That being said, I have understood throughout this process that my family's experience is not everyone's experience, and I have very much needed to hear what other families have thought and felt about this, and I have listened with very open ears. I have leaned different ways throughout the last few months, and I say that not to suggest that there is a flaw in whatever conclusion that we make, but just to say we have all grappled because we've all been listening, and to not only the project team, but to our community. I appreciated all of the research and the analysis of that research as an attorney. I felt the need to do my own research and to look at my, draw my own conclusions based on that research, and I did that. I was also very compelled, though, by our principals and the teachers that I spoke with, our elementary principals in particular, who spoke about what they very clearly observed in the classroom, both in their role as teachers, previous to their role as principals, about what they see best meets the needs of those elementary students. Ann spoke to our strategic plan and our core values, and I also wanted to highlight one of our strategic delimeters. We have made very clear that we will not allow past practice to limit the consideration of new ideas. And I had said this when I was running for this position, that I wanted us to model and to live the values that we intend to impart in our students, which is to be risk-takers. I think that we need to try this because the data, the observations, the community feedback suggests very strongly that this is the right call to move to triangle. I want to highlight that as a board, we have all asked Superintendent O'Sai and his administration that we want an evaluation process in place so that we can be looking at this over the next few years to see how it's working, and to see if we are seeing the improvements that we are hoping to see in our students' attendance, behavior, performance. I will conclude by saying that up until very recently, maybe even still now, I'm still trying to decide how I feel about timing of implementation. I very much respect the administration's efforts to answer all of our questions to date. I guess I'm deciding right now, I think the only thing more challenging or more disappointing to me in delaying the process would be to put it in place for the next school year and to get it wrong, to not have our support systems in place, to not have answered, questions answered, and to leave so many of our families in difficult positions with respect to childcare and after-school care. So for that reason, I think that I would also be supporting an implementation in 2021.
Thanks, Mary. Aston, I want to start by thanking you and Sarah, but especially I'm going to focus on you, Aston, because we have struggled with this as a board, and we have all individually shot our emails and our questions and our thoughts at you, and we've, you probably could read from the question, oh, they're leaning this way now, they're leaning this way now, as we've sort of tried out each of these ideas to see what feels like it is the best decision to make. And at every opportunity, at every moment, you have been gracious and responsive and thoughtful, and so I want to thank you for your leadership as we have moved through this process. You know, I have said this is sort of like a Tetris puzzle for me, you've got to get this piece to line up here, to line up here, to line up here, till you've got the complete puzzle in place, and that's what we have sort of struggled with here. I'm convinced that the triangle option is the best educational option for all of our students. I know we have kids on a bell curve, and for some families it may be a struggle, but for most of our students, I believe it's the best. I believe it's the best for our adolescent students to start school a little bit later, and I'm convinced from the experience and the wisdom of our principals that elementary students are up and ready to learn earlier. I've had an elementary student, I have some that are around me now, and they're up sooner than I want them to be up. So I think they're ready. What concerned me were three things, and I'm going to, one of those certainly was the cost. And we don't, I'm going to say this for the public at large, we can't do a referendum to get more money to pay for transportation. It doesn't work that way. We have to do it essentially out of the general fund, which means the more we pay for transportation, the less we pay have available for teachers, for staff, for electives. And so that, for me, took me to the three-tier option. It took out that two-tier square option because it was just too costly, year after year after year, to spend $400,000 or more, just did not meet the cost-benefit analysis in my mind as an educational value. So when you look at the three-tier value, you have to, you have to have three tiers, you have to get the buses across our city to pick up students, and for me, the, every childhood school experience matters, but we're kind of building our students to the high school experience, sort of our flagship, sort of the capstone of their, of their experience with us before we launch them out into society. And one of the things about the high school experiences is what I call the whole child experience, the after-school activities that almost all of our students participate in, they thrive, it kind of reinforces their education, it makes them part of the community more, they're mostly, whether it's arts, whether it's sports, it's a broad array of that. Because of that, we are limited, in my mind, to the end time for high school, and the end time for high school being that we are in relationship with other schools and other conferences for these activities, the end time needs to be 3:10 or 3:15, and we can't really bump that past back or our students start to lose out on opportunities. That's what kind of derives a lot of these hard choices that we've had to make, and why we've ended up with the triangle option that starts about 15 minutes sooner than we want for our elementary students, but the cost to kick that back is a loss of opportunity for our high school students, and it's $250,000 more for buses. Those just are not worth the cost, in my mind, so that's why I support the triangle as it is. We've heard from you, we've heard a lot of response, I really, one of the things I love about St. Louis Park is how engaged this community is, and how passionate this community is about education, and how well we work together. And I believe that the district and we can work together to make this change work. Nine years ago, I voted differently, and it was because safety was a greater concern for me then, but I have been convinced that we as a community, as parents, as neighbors, as school districts, as the city, can keep our elementary students safe, and we can, and I say that when I see parents waiting with kids in the light of day at the buses. So I know they're going to wait with their kids when it's dark out, too, and I know that people are going to be tuned in, and I believe we can keep them safe getting to and from school, or do our part, because it's a community effort. The piece that concerns me is elementary school ending much earlier in the childcare piece, and how safe are those students at the end of the day? And it is that concern, and what I have heard about our childcare challenges, and what I have heard, experienced in Wayzetta and Edina with long wait lists, I want us to implement this better. I want us to have the time to do it right. I want us not to have childcare glitches, or as many of them as I believe we would have if we went too soon. And so for that safety concern in my mind, I'm, I would prefer that we do the implementation of triangle a year later and not do it immediately. So that's kind of where I, where I fall out, I think I covered most of the bases. Right, Aston, did you want to say anything before we move on, and then we're going to come back to an action item later?
Absolutely. So I want to first start off, because I know that you all have taken time very graciously to acknowledge the hard work of the staff and the engagement of the project team and engagement of our community, and I, I think that all is certainly warranted, and I appreciate your, the time that you, you've taken. You know, I don't think people truly understand the urgency in which each of you, and I can truly say that as the person that is the recipient of all of your emails, that each of you have, have taken around this topic, it's very clear to me that, that as a school board, each of you are committed to ensuring that we're providing a safe and nurturing environment, right, that energizes and enhances each of our students' experience and their spirit here in St. Louis Park. And as part of that, this process is something that was necessary, and a decision to create the type of environment in which each of our students can thrive will ultimately, I believe, come out of it. I've resonated with much of what each of you have said. This is, this process has been one in which, and I've shared this with you all at different times, that there are implications no matter what decision is made here. And like you, whatever the decision that is made, I want to make sure that we do it, do it right, and that we are as efficient and as responsive to the needs of our families as possible. So as I've reflected on this, the thing that I believe will be necessary for us in order to be responsive and meet the needs, particularly for school-aged childcare, because for me personally, as I reflect on all of the different implications and considerations and concerns that have been raised over the past several months, the one that continues to come up for me is the school-aged childcare, particularly the after-school piece, knowing that we'll have elementary school-aged students getting out of school an hour to an hour and a half earlier. So I want to make sure that our programming is sufficient to meet the needs of all of our learners. Now, I say that also recognizing that this is a tremendous opportunity that we haven't had here in St. Louis Park. You know, I know we've spent so much time looking at this from a, from a standpoint of the concern, but as I talk to our principals and our teachers, the piece that really energizes me about this is the opportunity that it will present for our youngest learners to have enrichment opportunities after school, which because of the current timing of the end of the day at the elementary, we don't have a lot of options. So I, if, not that I'm a board member, but if I had a vote this evening, right, I would, I would be voting to do a revised or a status quo option for 1920 with implementation of triangle in 2021. So, thank you all.
Yeah, just to go off on that, Aston, thank you for that. Like when we were, all of us, or most of us had mentioned talking to the elementary school principals, and when we were talking to them about this after-school piece, and also talking to a bunch of other staff members and stakeholders, and trying to fit it in to a very short period of time, like we basically had to cut off the elementary school principals, or they had to cut off themselves, because they were starting to brainstorm about all the ideas that they had for partnering with Kids Place and the paras and the teachers, and making that after-school, those after-school activities much more robust. So I, I think that, that is clearly an opportunity that we have here, that given some time and some guidance, that they can really thrive. And, and I just want to mention one other thing in terms of feedback, so we've been focusing on what we've heard over the last few months. This is my eighth year on the school board. We have heard throughout my entire time from middle school parents and staff about the early start. So I don't want to gloss over that feedback, because that has been constant and consistent for, for many years. And it was a little bit silent, because I think people were thinking that we were going to resolve that through this process, but that is, that has been kind of the undercurrent throughout, is that, that feedback that we've been getting for years.
Thank you, Ashton. I think we'll move on and we'll come back, this is on an, for an action item at the end of the, end of the meeting. So next up is the curriculum review process. Patrick Duffy, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, Chair Gore, as members of the board. I'm excited to be here tonight and talk to you a little bit about the curriculum review cycle. I was here once before and shared a bit of an overview with you, but after talking with our teaching and learning team and Superintendent O'Sai, we thought it would be prudent to share with you what, what I've been sharing out at each of the sites over the past month. We're going to be beginning a math review cycle tomorrow, and I wanted to kind of let you know where we are in this process and give you an opportunity to weigh in about your perspectives on it as well. So I want to start just by saying, this review process is really just amending a process that we've already had in place, but it's based upon the work that we've done over the past seven months as a shared district teacher leadership team, as a teaching and learning team, and the work that we've done with principals. I've gone out and done sort of an informal, critical ethnography, having conversations with each of you, with principals, with our teacher leaders, with numerous students as part of the superintendent advisory committee, and with parents as well, and gotten their perspectives on sort of what they would like to see around our curriculum, our instruction, and our programs for students. With that said, I've also had the opportunity to work in and visit other school districts and see their processes and help inform the best parts of their work and look at how that might inform our current reality and how we can do better for our students as well. And one of the big things that's come out of that is really a need to examine instructional practices, that's how we teach and how we collaborate, just as much as we review our curriculum materials. What we teach isn't going to be changed, isn't going to be able to meet the needs of our students unless we've really dug in to how we collaborate and how we teach. So we're juggling a lot of things. Some of you have been to my office and have seen the amount of programs that I've collected in my conversations, and I believe we have probably about 70 to 75 student programs or initiatives going on in the district, and we're doing a lot of them quite well. But to really achieve excellence in these programs, we also want to make sure that we're focused on a few at a time, and that hopefully this process will help us through that. So I had mentioned to you before that my hope in doing this work and in their conversations with our teaching and learning team was to have, have a curriculum review process that everyone in the district could easily understand, to have language that they could speak to, and at any point during the process, if someone said, you know, what are you doing? Are you on the math committee? What does that mean? They'd be able to speak to that. So phase one of the first three phases is really going to be looking inward, and it's going to be an opportunity for teachers to self-reflect and really understand who they are as educators in the classroom. We're going to kick off phase one with a two-day workshop with teacher self-reflection, an examination of disaggregated data. We're going to hear and reflect upon student voice and community input. We're going to unpack standards, and we're going to look at a racial equity purpose statement that was created by each of these groups earlier in the year. We're going to be bringing together representatives from our immersion programs, our IB programs, from AP, from, and those that are scholars of critical culturally relevant pedagogy as well. And of course, we'll engage in courageous conversation. Phase two is going to be an opportunity for us to really look and see what others are doing and what we can learn from them. During this phase, we're going to research and visit regional, national, and international exemplars, and when I said, told this to some teachers, their, their eyes lit up, thinking that we'd be taking a lot of trips, but, you know, we do have the opportunity to look virtually at what others are doing and connect with people through technology as well. We plan to engage scholars of culturally relevant pedagogy, content-specific pedagogy, and tech enrichment during this process. And then this will be the time when we decide whether or not we want to establish new criteria for adopting new materials, if we want to pilot curriculum, or if we want to do some sort of curriculum writing during this time. You know, I say, it says up here at the top, this is the point where we will distinguish knowledge from foolishness. And what, what I like about this is it's an opportunity for us to say, are there things we're doing just because we've always been doing them, but they're not really the best for our kids? And we really have to take some time to look at that and not just say, let's buy a new version of the same curriculum we have, just because we think what we have is out of date. Phase three is going to be looking outward, and that's an opportunity for us to really say, how do we build a program and build a plan that's going to outlast us? I told our teachers just in this room a few weeks ago that the most fragile program in any of our, in, in any of our classrooms, in any of our schools, is the one that is dependent upon an individual for it to exist. We want programs that are going to outlast the people that are currently teaching in our classrooms. So this is an opportunity for us to build for eternity with a racial equity transformation plan. Some of you are familiar with the work we've done with courageous conversation, and as you can see in phase one, we'll really be taking an opportunity to be personal, local, and immediate in our approach, in our reflection, and to keep a spotlight on race as we look at how our curriculum and how our instruction is informed by our racial consciousness. Phase two is going to be really about gathering multiple perspectives and establishing and understanding the parameters that are in place to make sure that we're achieving excellence for all of our children. And then the third phase, when we build for eternity, will also include creating a racial equity transformation plan, hopefully with benchmarks that we'll be able to share with the school board for where we want to be in three years, in five years, and in eight years, when we start the process over again. So where's the timeline on this? In an effort to try to really focus on areas of need, everybody told me that we should start their program right away. And as you can think, as, a lot of people said, what about us? We had to kind of look at, how do we look at the big picture and look over the next eight years how we're going to, to, you know, really review our curricular programs? This spring, we are starting a review of mathematics. I heard loud and clear from many of our elementary teachers that they really needed an examination of our math curriculum across the board. World Language is going to also be reviewed this spring with an effort to elevate and strengthen the rigor of our world language program for every child, whether or not they're in our immersion program from kindergarten through eighth grade. And then the other piece that we're going to look at is, we want to really draw upon the great work that's been done in literacy over the past few years. We've developed a very strong balanced literacy program that we want to go and review and see how we make sure that we're having a racial equity transformation plan that becomes our next steps for that as well. As you can see, next fall, we'll be starting a language arts, literature and writing review, as well as a science review. These will all be pre-K-12 reviews that will bring in teachers and representatives from all of those different grade levels. One of the things that seemed to be missing from our curricular review process was really a timeline and a setup for us to review our student programs. Now, this isn't inclusive of every program that we have in our system, but it's the largest programs that meet the greatest needs of our students. And as you can see, we set up a timeline to also review gifted and talented in our enrichment programs in a few weeks. We'll be starting that. There are going to be three teams that we're going to be working with to basically address all of this review. One will be our teaching and learning team, which consists of Tom Marble, Tammy Reynolds, Prachi, Frida, Superintendent O'Sai, and myself. We meet on a weekly basis as a PLC, as a professional learning community, and we really look to see how we can bring guidance to this work and also set parameters for our teacher leaders. We're going to have a design team. The design team will be a group that will interview and apply to be a part of a group of three to four teachers who are experts in the field, and that group will really be trained and developed to be the decision-makers around whether or not we adopt new curriculum and what steps we should take to strengthen the programs within the classroom. And then we'll have a consulting team, and I mentioned a group of teachers that really is widely representative of our student body and are, I should say, of our staff demographics that represent all of the different programs, and that group will be coming together on a semi-regular basis to provide input and perspectives and ideas about where we can go forward. For those of you that like to kind of see how this plays out, our teaching and learning team will develop some, the context and reality by providing data to our larger consulting group, starting tomorrow with math. And then we'll agree upon the results that we want to see in each of these areas that are going to basically meet the needs of our students. We need to start seeing our indigenous students on a greater level. We need to do better by all of our students, particularly our students of color within the district. We know that these are areas of need, and there are things that we're going to look at and we're not going to shy away from. The teaching and learning team will really be setting the parameters, saying, for instance, here are legalities that we have to keep in mind, here are state timelines that we need to pay attention to, but we really want teachers to be creative within those parameters and feel like they have an opportunity to get somewhere that they feel proud of in three years or five years. The other piece, for those of you that like more complexity to the process, what I'll just say is, you have representatives here that are going to be developing a shared reality. We have a design team that's going to be creating options, and then within the course of two years, the consulting team will be brought back together to say, here are basically all the choices that we feel like we need to make around curriculum. And then they'll bring it back to the smaller design team, who will come up with the implementation plan. And at that point, it'll be shared with all pertinent staff, including the school board. Over the two-day workshop that I mentioned that will be kicking things off, we're going to be using 10 tenants for really looking at curriculum over this two-day review, and there will be key questions for self-reflection throughout this whole process. And the idea here is to elevate the work that we're doing with our children, not just to be about helping them meet standards, but actually to develop them as leaders within their field. The focus of our two-day math workshop tomorrow is going to be, how are we developing math leaders, not just how are we helping them become proficient on the, on the MCA test? So here are the structural tenants that'll be part of our day-one workshop, and then the day-two workshop will focus on our curricular tenants. So I'd just like to turn it over to you and just say, what are your initial reactions? How could this model help strengthen our collaboration and shared leadership throughout the school district? And then if you have other questions that you don't want to share tonight, you can always contact me via email or directly.
Before we take questions, Patrick, can you, I did, you had a couple of graphs up there that had one-twos and threes on them, and...
Would you like me to go back to them?
Yeah, and then, so what do the one-twos and threes mean? Just a fact question to clarify.
So each one of these numbers represents a year in the phase. We have, I mentioned that there would be three phases, and each phase will take up to a year. If the design team determines that they can move more quickly than that, there'll be an opportunity to move through the phases more quickly than three years, but we're giving up to a year for there to be the work that needs to be done in each of those phases.
Thank you.
Okay, I like, I like a lot what you're, can you hear me? I like a lot what you're doing in here, especially the tech ed piece up there. I like that it's up there, that you're going to start working on some stuff like that. Don't like that it's out for years, three years, but maybe with what you just said, maybe that could come in? Or could that not? It's just going to stay at the year 2022 and maybe get condensed down into two years?
You know, it's, it's tough. I, there, there's a part of me that would love to move all of the things up to this year and next year. I say, we are, we are a little bit bound by some of the state regulations. So math, science, language arts, reading, literacy, math are among the areas that we're required to review. Some of the other areas that we have within our student programming aren't even required and haven't been reviewed for a long time. So by putting them into the timeline, we're making a commitment to review them, even if they're a couple of years out. You know, science, for instance, is one that right now is adopting new standards. So the timeline, even though our middle school and high school and our elementary have started some work already, next fall, we're going to re-enter that work and sort of do a reset once the state standards have been reestablished, and that seemed like an appropriate timeline to start with that. But as far as tech ed and some of those others, what I've told many of the teachers that I've presented to, it's, it's important that they continually improve their programs between now and when their, their program is up for review. If a program, for instance, if teachers wait until 2022, it could be emotionally painful for them to think, we waited four years to make the improvements necessary for our children. So we'll continue to support and guide teachers individually or as professional learning communities or as a grade level as they do their work. This is just the formal process for doing the review.
Also, there's a few other things in here that I really like that you're going to be looking at, like racial, race identity and anti-racism, which is a very good course my daughter took. And I, I just like a lot that you're doing out here. I assume that you're going to report to us quarterly, annually, how often you think, Ashton, but...
Well, one of the things we've talked about with our teacher leaders is the importance of them being able to share transparently where they are in the process. So each one of these reviews, you know, hopefully would be sharing a progress report annually on each one of these areas. So for math, gifted and talented programming, and for world language, you'd be getting a review about those three areas at some point soon.
Yeah, I think all this looks good, except maybe what I'm concerned might have been like Ken about the tech ed being so far out. If someone had some ideas of a new class to offer in computer programming or computer design, is there a process that could be done before the formal review or...
Certainly, yeah. I mean, there, there are still areas, any teacher can go to their principal, or they can approach anybody in our teaching and learning team and ask for support on something that they want to do. As far as proposing new courses, you know, that's something that we'll review through this process as well, about whether or not the courses we're current, currently offering are really meeting the needs of our community. You know, I'll say, I'll just say, as a former social studies teacher, you know, I felt like we, I wanted to get to that right away. In fact, if you look around our country, sometimes I think that we're in a social studies crisis, but I didn't want to favor that one just because of my background, and we're out, that's a couple of years out as well.
Speaking of your time as a teacher...
Yeah.
On the last slide, you had the baby, it's, baby, we can do better tagline.
Yeah.
And you mentioned that, you talked about that story at the staff development, and I'm just curious if you would share a little bit about what that, like what that philosophy, what that tagline means for you for, for leading this work?
Do you want to hear the story, or...
If you, if you feel like sharing the story, you can, and if you feel just like sharing the, the philosophy of it, that's also great.
I'm trying to see if Superintendent O'Sai thinks I should. Okay, you give me the thumbs up. So, okay, I'll talk a little bit about when I was a teacher. So I used to be a teacher at, at one of our, our neighbor to the west, Hopkins High School and Hopkins North Junior High, and when I was there, one of the things I really looked forward to was parent-teacher conferences, and it, I saw it as an opportunity for us to really close the loop between what's happening at home and what's happening in the school. And I would get teased sometimes by my colleagues about the fact that I would have a line that would go out the door in our, in our arena-style conferences. And I just really took it as a time to really make sure that the child knew that we were working together and that the parent knew what was going on in the classroom. But with that said, I didn't always, you know, necessarily know how to communicate everything that needed to be communicated to parents. And I remember very well, I had one student, I'll call him Tony, who was a seventh-grade student in my class, and I was really, I was happy to see him in line. He was an African-American, seventh-grade child, male, who was there with his mom in line, and they came up and they sat down at my table, and I said, oh, I said to his mom, you know, I'm so excited that you're here, and I want to tell you that Tony is one of those kids that I look to in class. When I tell corny jokes, he laughs. When I'm telling something profound or that I think is profound, he, he nods, he smiles. I love having him in class. And she looked at him, and she goes, oh, that's a beautiful baby, do you see that? And I said, did you hear what, did you hear what Mr. Duffy's saying? And he goes, yeah, yeah, I hear it. And then I actually pulled out one of his assignments, and I, I said, look... And then I actually pulled out one of his assignments, and I, I said, look at this. He got a B+ on it, you know, and he's writing really better. He's improving every, you know, every time that he does something, it seems like he's improving. And she beamed, and he beamed, and I beamed, and we were all excited that everybody was feeling really good. But then she put her arm around him, and I remember this really well, she put her arm around him and she pulled the paper over nearby, the essay, and she said, you know what, did you hear what Mr. Duffy said this time? And he goes, yeah, I did. And she goes, okay, but baby, you can do better. And she had her arm around him, and she just said, now, look at this first sentence here in your thesis, it's not grammatically aligned. And then as you go through the paragraph, you use a lot of repetition of the same words. You really need to use a thesaurus if you're going to write an essay that's compelling in any way. And she started going through, giving him specifics about how he could do better in his paper. And I wish I could say at that time that I looked at it and thought, gosh, that's a critique of me. I should look at how I'm, I'm really giving feedback in a better way. But instead, I looked and I thought, God, I wish everybody had a mom like Tony. And it wasn't until years later that I actually heard a black professor from California at one of the conferences at the University of Minnesota that I was attending, tell a similar story about how his mother was the one that raised expectations for him, that I started to reflect upon how just loving the students and really caring for them wasn't enough if I wasn't also going to give them rigorous and really clear feedback. So, you know, I think what I've said to teachers here before, and I think it's the philosophy of a lot of our leaders, our principals, is that we collectively metaphorically put our arms around our teachers and say, baby, we can do better. We're doing a lot of good work, but we know that we need to continuously improve and we need to be like Tony's mom to all of our kids.
That's one of my favorite stories. Thank you for sharing.
I love the framework, and I really appreciate the months that you have taken, you hit the ground running when you joined us. And you have done a lot of input and analysis to get us to this point, and we need to be here, right? And what I like about the timing, it's right as we're at the tail end of our current strategic plan, getting ready to go into the development of the next strategic plan, so your timing of this is so perfect. Thank you. A discussion I have heard among a certain group of kids from the high school is about electives, and electives that are relevant to them, especially as it relates to the NEST, because that is a community effort, but the kids are driving it. And they had expressed a hope to us as a board that it could be used as a learning lab as part of academic credit. And so what I really want to make sure that we get into this, especially where it works with middle school, but especially at the high school level, the student voice of what they want, and the other group of students who we've heard from in the past two years are the civil rights research experience students, and they would really like to see an ethnic studies course. And having that accelerate their input is really important. So that's all I want to add to this.
Okay.
Patrick, I have a couple of questions. First, a just a clarification, I think you said you, we had immersion K through eight, and I just want to remind the folks at home that we have immersion, high-level immersion classes at the high school as well.
Absolutely.
Because otherwise, I'm going to hear from families. So I am curious about how IB planners intersect or don't intersect with the work that you're doing. Is that the how when you're talking about the what? Is that the difference?
So, you know, a couple, I believe last month, our IB coordinators and representation from immersion came and really spoke to the fact that IB is a framework and immersion is a framework in which all of our curriculum resides. So it really, it's not necessarily the how or the what. It's, it's what frames all of what we do. So those planners are just a part of the process, I would say.
And then my next question is, how, how do you capture this for eternity? You know, the, the lore is that a teacher walks into the classroom and shuts the door and does whatever he or she wants. So how are you capturing this plan for eternity? What's, or have you not gotten that far yet?
Well, we certainly haven't gotten that far yet. What I would say is, it starts with an acknowledgement, you know, we said, the first phase is about knowing thyself. So we're going to be asking teachers to look at their strengths and their limitations, and then look at how they can be stronger as a collaborative team. It's going to be important that our collaborative teams, our professional development plans, and the work that we're doing to review our curriculum have some coherence to them. And as all of those things come together and as teachers really look at how they're doing their work, hopefully they'll be able to see, what are the things right now that are dependent on me? I unfortunately, when I was a school administrator, had a couple of teachers that got sick and had to take a leave. And in both of those cases, some of the extracurricular activities, some of the after-school activities that they ran, were left hanging, and students didn't have an opportunity to engage in those anymore. And we don't want to see those things happen. So how, how do they build and realize that they're building something bigger than themselves?
Is, is a piece of that some sort of a digital platform to store things on so they're easily findable going forward?
Absolutely.
And then making sure that when we change our digital platform, that gets upgraded and not lost?
Well, throughout all of this, we're going to be modeling how we use digital learning for our students. And then we've got digital platforms throughout the district that we use that I think are just becoming stronger and more consistently used across our classrooms and across our collaborative teams.
And my last question has, is in anticipation of the joint city school board meeting that we're having, and I'm anticipating that we may be asked, what's our thinking on how we're going to integrate science and use of the revised, remodeled, enhanced Westwood Nature Center? And I just, if you can just talk in a big-picture way for us about that, if you have, if you can share your thinking on the process.
Well, yeah, Westwood, I mean, as we know, Westwood Nature Center is going through some major remodeling, and I think it, it fits very well on a timeline with our science review, with new science standards coming in 2020, 2021, with us beginning a review again pre-K-12 in 2019, and then with the developments with Westwood Hills Nature Center coming in 2020 and 2021. We're going to have an opportunity to really look at, how do we help ensure that students across our system are having experiences with nature right in our own community? And how do we ensure that every child has an opportunity to see outdoor learning as, as part of their experience in St. Louis Park? So I think there'll be great opportunities there. I know we've talked about hosting some adult events there, and we actually did one of our teacher leadership meetings in the fall there, and for many of the teachers, it was the first time they'd been in that space. And that was a great opportunity to expose them to a new learning opportunity.
Thank you, Patrick. Great work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is the Self-Insurance Employee Health Benefit Plan. Rick Cryer, Director of Human Resources, and Patricia Magnuson, our Director of Business Services.
Chair of Lords, members of the Board, Superintendent, Patricia Magnuson and I will go through how we got here and then what we're going to be asking the Board to consider in terms of our upcoming employee health and, health insurance benefit renewal. We also have Chase Ambrosia here from One Digital. He's our, part of a team from One Digital that supports us with our, our health insurance costs and bid renewals and making sure we're getting a fair deal, whether it's self-insured or fairly insured. And Nate Tangen's here from PAT and has been with us through the last, you know, number of years as we've gone and looked at insurance changes, whether he's been part of the insurance committee or as president of PAT, oversaw the members of PAT and part of the executive board who discussed things that were going on with our health insurance renewals. We want to, tonight's, we want to take you through a little bit of a, oh, why we got here, and then we'll frame kind of an overview of the topic. So we're, we have been looking at possibly self-insuring for four years or better. We've been, we meet with all employee groups monthly as part of an insurance committee. One Digital is here, CBIZ was working with us before One Digital. We had a situation where our health insurance costs were running away at 12% increases per year, and the teachers' union, among others, were looking at, you know, what, what can we do to put the brakes on this, and including possibly going to PEEP as an alternative and breaking possibly away from the district plan. Through collaboration and a lot of study, we've come together as, as employee and district groups to look at, you know, what drives the health insurance costs, what, you know, what can we do about it? What's reasonable? How do we understand what's fair? And the analytics that we get from One Digital has really helped us understand where we are and where we, where we could be. So if you go to the overview of the topic slide, or do I do that? Oh, I can do that. Thanks. It's right here in front of me, but it's a Mac. I may need Patricia to, to drive for me. We're going to talk about what is self-insurance versus fully insured, what are the risks associated with going with self-insured and, and staying with fully insured? What are other districts doing as they self-insure? Which other districts are self-insuring? And why we're, as administration, recommending a move to self-insurance for the Board to consider? And then, next steps, one of the statutes require Board approval of a move to self-insurance. So that's one of the, that's why we, as administration, are here before you, doing a little bit of education here and then asking you to vote on a resolution at your next meeting to approve self-insured. So we've all maybe been part of fully insured plans. The district picks a carrier, they tell us how much the premiums are going to be per month, we pay the premiums, they pay the claims. If it goes up, they pay them. If it goes down, they keep the profits. You know, it kind of works that way and it, and it's fairly stable. What isn't stable is the year-to-year. And so that's where, that's where we see some of the risks that we'll talk about later. In a self-insured plan, the district looks at its expected claims over the last year, what's trending, what looks like it's coming, and we actually pick a carrier to be the administrator of those claims, pay the claims, and then we pay the actual cost of the claims monthly. You know, the premiums that we charge ourselves and employees are set by the district and the insurance committee each year based on what we believe is healthy for the plan and allows reserves so that we don't run into cash flow problems. Monthly costs can fluctuate on, on the health claims, and the district manages those fluctuations by having reserves in the bank and also by using something called stop-loss insurance to manage the individual high claim and then the aggregate cost. So there's two kinds of stop-loss insurance that we'll talk about. And then if there are, if there is a loss, it's managed out of the reserves we built up, and if there's excess, it stays with the district to offset future costs. So that's kind of the difference. They, you know, as, as Patricia put together a graph, you know, it shows most of it's very similar to employees. They won't see a difference. The employee experience is, they'll have a card, they'll go to the doctor, they'll present the card, all of that's exactly the same. It's just the backside, who's paying and how are the claims?
Yeah, as Rick said, this really, this chart reiterates what was on the previous two slides, but those first four items are really the employees' experience. They will notice no difference. And there's really not a lot of difference for the way we are going to be managing premiums and our work with whichever health insurance provider we work with to provide our self-insurance. So a lot of that will be very transparent for our employees. The differences are who benefits from the gains and takes the risk of a loss, and with self-insurance, the district is in control of that. On a fully insured plan, of course, the insurance carrier is in control of that. And then the other thing is who sets the premium rates. And so under fully insured, we, as much as we are able, we get good information from our health insurance providers about how they are setting premiums, and of course, there's a markup for administrative fees. On self-insurance, we are in control of that conversation. And I think the way I look at self-insurance is that it puts the control of, it puts control back in the hands of, of the employees, of the organization, and we aren't at the whim so much of the self, of the insurance carriers. Of course, what happens with our employees and their usage of our plans will impact us just the same as it does when we're fully insured, but we have a little bit more control over that. We have spent time talking to many of our colleagues about their experiences moving to self-insured, and there are not very many bad tales about that. In fact, I don't think I ran across one. But there are risks, but there are risks with a fully insured plan as well. And the biggest risk for fully insured plans are the premium variability. As Rick said, we were experienced, experiencing 12% increases, and you, we can understand some of what's behind that, but we don't have a lot of control over some of the decisions that are made around setting the premium rates. Under a self-insured plan, we set the premium rates. To alleviate some of the risks of cash flow, there is stop-loss insurance that protects against both high claims and a maximum liability, and over time, we'll want to build up reserves. So it's really important how we set our premium rates so that we can build up reserves over time. I was just talking to one of my colleagues as I left my office today, okay, review with me how this went for you. And as they, the most important thing, and I heard it over and over from my colleagues, is how you set that first-year premium rate so we can build up reserves. And this district that I was talking to is now into their third year, and they already have reserves set to a point that they might be able to deliver a reduction in rates. So this isn't about reducing premium to our employees right now. What this is about is putting control over premiums and getting away from the highs and lows of premiums year over year. Over time, if we do this strategically and smartly, perhaps an end result will be that we can have reduced premiums because we don't have to pay an insurance company administrative fees and profits.
Yeah, yeah. So you want, do you want to do rates or?
Um...
Okay, good. So anyway, so we, we went out to bid. It's called, it's a HITA process, and One Digital helps us collect proposals, and then we send them back, and then we get a second round of proposals. And our first round of proposals were higher, coming in, some were recommending about a 5% increase in the first year with caps of around 13% to 14% in the second year. You know, when One Digital kind of sharpens their pencil a little bit more, our final fully insured costs were ranging from 2.5% to 8% in the first year and 8.5% to 14.5% in the second year. So that's what the fully insured costs were going to go up. And then when we ask for self-insured claims, you can see that, oh, well, if you're going to take the risk, 2%, 12%, reduction, almost flat at a half a percent increase. And One Digital would say, based on your information, don't believe that negative 12. You know, you might be able to see a negative 1/2, but we would recommend setting your first-year premium at about 6%, all right? Having a 6% premium increase instead of a 12% reduction will help build reserves in that first year, and we would be able to not have a shock if it wasn't 12% reduction, you know, in, in terms of cash flow. So when we look at this as building up reserves quickly, when you move to self-insured, you pay premiums for the first two years, but you don't get any claims in. So that's about $700,000 a month for, for the first two months, yeah? So you have about $700,000 a month in premiums that you're building into your, your district bucket. So you have a bottom, you know, about a million four in there by the second year, and then the claims start to come in. We also believe that by setting the rates at about a 6% increase, we should put about another $600,000 in that reserve, and if all things go as planned, we should have about $2 million in reserves by the end of the first year, all right? Now, that's on an $8 million insurance buy, so it's, you know, you only have about a 25% cushion there. So, you know, you know, we'd, we'd be looking... So, you know, you know, we'd, we'd be looking at One, One Digital to help us decide when does that set point make sense to then start using those reserves to keep the premiums coming down. We have been self-insured for years with our dental plan. And we haven't given ourselves an increase for five years that I've been here because the reserves have been enough to offset any increase in the premiums. So, our reserves are actually building up faster than, you know, than we're spending the money in the dental plan. So, it's been very, it's been very beneficial for us to be self-insured for dental.
I just want to say on here that this is the most important decision that the district insurance group will make with the help of One Digital. Looking at that 6% when it's really tempting under self-insured to say, well, we could probably take a reduction or a flat premium. But it will be important for us as a team to stay disciplined around putting that increase in premiums until we know that we have a reserve in place. So, this is the biggest thing that we do to help reduce risk.
And so, where people have gotten into trouble, if they've said, oh, we self-insured and it went bad, they may have been tempted to take a number that was a negative number instead of funding a positive number as they went into self-insurance. So...
This slide with One Digital's help, we looked for other self-insured districts. And I think the list of non-self-insured districts might be a little bit shorter than this list. But we're a little bit late coming to the self-insurance game because districts are really clear about this, that this is a way to put control with our employees. And we can help ameliorate the risk by working together with a good expert. So, these are some of our colleagues that are on, that are self-insured and have been doing it for a few years. The benefit of being a little behind the curve is that we can learn from all of their experience. And we have been on the phone with folks from all of these, several of these districts just asking about how they first started up, how, what their advice is as they work with their insurance committees. And so, we are able to benefit from the marketplace sort of shaking itself out and from the experience of our colleagues.
And this group of folks meets monthly as a self-insured group of business managers and HR directors and benefits people to talk about self-funding issues and how to make sure your plans are solid. There's a good support network. Okay. So, 20 years ago, I would have said no. 10 years ago, I would have said no. Five years ago, I did say no. Two years ago, we looked at it and it wasn't the right time based on where the stepping off point. It was going to be way more expensive to self-insure two years ago than it was just to take a fully insured risk and, and run with it. One Digital showed us why and, and, you know, I think that was the right decision. But today, administration and myself would recommend, yes, moving to a self-insured plan because we have the tools now. Back then, you didn't have a, a district business office, an HR department, did not have the actuaries and tools and analytics to understand and, and cut the risk and figure out what was the right way to set the rates. So, you were just kind of winging it. So, I, I recommended to boards for years, don't do it. And today, I would be recommending that it's the right play for us at the right, right time because the technology's changed and we have a very solid partner in One Digital to provide the expertise and a path forward to, to make this happen. Thirty-four surrounding districts, as Patricia showed, have been doing this and, and been successful. And there hasn't been a district that went self-insured that's went back to fully insured. So, that's another thing for the board to consider. As I said, I think the timing is right. We're going to step off, be able to move into self-funding without really having to do much different than the fully insured 11% increase that we would see in there. And then, we'd be setting ourselves up to have the reserves to be financially sound as we move forward. Hopefully, as Patricia mentioned, we would then have the reserves and the cash flow to level out those highs. So, you don't have to take 12s. If, if you did have a lot of claims, you could maybe give fund at an eight or something like that. And then, if it goes negative, you just keep it at a zero or something so that you keep the reserves building up. So, the roller coaster doesn't go like this. It goes more like that as we're moving forward. So, that levels out the pieces. Saving the carrier profits and keeping the money for district services to employees and students is a big deal. The average administrative load by the health carriers is somewhere between, let's say, 14% to 16%. 14% on $8.2 million of insurance claim, that's 1.14 million. So, you know, having those resources for us instead of passing those on to the insurance carrier every year is a big deal. And we hope that by doing this properly, we reduce the cost pressure on collective bargaining because as insurance skyrockets, you know, it gets, it's a, it's a big issue at the table. How are we going to keep health costs low? So, those are all of the rationale behind why we would be asking the board to adopt a resolution April 22nd. We would then be contacting the carriers that we choose to work with so that we can put together all the open enrollment materials that would happen on May 6th through 16th. So, there's not a lot of time. And so, I would ask the board if we could have some discussion or questions from the board to get an inkling because if the board was solidly against this, we wouldn't have time to wait till the 22nd to get the no and still make open enrollment happen. So...
So, I do recall doing this again. Now, wasn't it a collaboration or something before when we were looking at doing self-insured? Like a, a group of five or six different districts?
No, the, I'm sorry. I don't recall, at least when we were looking at it before, as being any kind of consortium or moving, you know, in a, in a consortium. We do have kind of an odd consortium through our VIBA arrangement. It's a, it's a healthcare spending account that we provide to employees. And we're, because of the arrangement that we got into with C-Biz, it's called a REBA-VIBA trust. And so, we're in this trust and we're trying to extract ourself from the, the trust. But ultimately, you know, that, that's the only collaborative venture. A long time ago, there was the BKEG, the Business Action Group, that came together to look at, you know, private sector companies coming together to buy. But, but we haven't been looking at that here.
So, and then, so of those schools that are self-insured, does Digital, One, One Digital do any or some or?
Most, actually, yeah. Most of them.
Okay. And... Would be, then we would be able to do that monthly collaboration with those groups of schools?
Yes, yeah, we would. I believe they meet the third Friday of every month and, you know, they, you know, they're, they come together and there's a lot of sharing. Nate's actually on the monthly email, so...
And so, would the administrative things that take place now that we're self-insured fall on whom? And then, how much work would that be?
Yeah, it would fall between human resources and the business office. You know, as, as I've been talking to Brooks Grossinger, who's in our business office and would administer a lot of this, I, I don't think the workload changes that much. We still pay a premium in the same way we pay a monthly premium. So, while we'll be more responsible for the, the day-to-day questions and answers, the workload isn't that much different.
Just one second. So, you know, in, instead of getting a monthly bill for premiums from, let's say, our current provider health partners, we would get a weekly statement of the expenses and we would take weekly claims. But they still handle all the payments when somebody goes to the doctor and then the doctor gets a bill and the insurance company. All of that is still handled out there. Yeah.
So, then the last question was, I, you, you said something about the first two months you wouldn't pay claims. How, how would those claims be handled?
So, what, there's always a, there's always a billing lag. So, you go to the doctor, you know, in July and that bill doesn't come back to us as a bill, you know, to, to be paid for about 60 days. So, things that happen in July are going to get paid in September.
So, that's how you build up your cash flow?
That's how you build up, you know, about a million four right away.
So, the stop-loss insurance, that sets an absolute maximum on our liability and what would that amount?
I'm going to ask Chase to give us the thing. I believe it's about 750 million, 750,000 or something. But we, we have to set two, two caps. One is the stop-loss for any one high claim. So, let's say claims over 125,000 don't go back against our plan. They go against our reinsurance. And then, there's an aggregate stop-loss.
So that, so that the person at home can hear you all something.
So, the, so the way that we're looking at this right now, based on the average counts, the annualized premium under the fully insured arrangement is about $8.5 million. If the district takes a 6% increase, that is going to get the funding close to a 9.1 million. With the, the offers from the carriers that were received, in particular, the offer that's at the minus 12, the max liability for the district is essentially 25% above that number and it's at about 9.2 million. So, if the district takes a 6% increase, they're walking into self-insured with a 1% risk when typically there is a risk of 25% higher cost above that expected claim number. So, that's kind of where the timing and everything else has lined up for this to be the opportunity to really look at self-insured and, you know, create a, a level set of understanding of what the benefits are for people. But also, put more transparency into the process so that everybody's kind of engaged in the program and we can drive consumerism a little bit more because it's your dollars that are paying for this.
So, I'm supportive of this change. Thanks for doing all the work on this and being so thoughtful about your approach. I can tell you, as I've met with other board members from other districts at the AMSB and MSBA, other than the most recent meeting where it was start times, start times, start times, the other meetings I've been asked, are you guys self-insured? Are you guys self-insured? And what was kind of implied in that was, you know, this is kind of the way to go, or at least it was the way to go for them. So, I like that we're not, kind of as you were saying, Patricia, that we're not leading the way, that we've got some experience from this group that we can rely upon and get some information as we go along and, and really, and have learned from, from what they've done. So, thanks for, for doing that.
So, I got several questions unless somebody... So, there is a fee to a third-party administrator because they are the ones who do the processing of the claims. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
Yep.
And then, that, is there any risk to our general fund or any of our other funds that we'll ever have to pay any money if we do this?
In theory, yes, there is risk to the general fund. But that is, you know, why you go in at it with a prudent approach. And like Rick was speaking about that initial claims lag that occurs, you know, that's one of the biggest things in leaving a fully insured arrangement and going self-insured. Because when you're fully insured, you're leaving that behind with you. None of those claims carry over into the new arrangement. So, when that natural claims lag catches up at about a month and a half to two months into that current plan year, you have sufficient funds built up to cover out what would be the run-out cost in the event that you dissolve the plan. The theory is to never get there because once you go self-insured, you stay self-insured. But at the end of the day, that's kind of where you get the money to cover the cost when you have to dissolve the, the plan if it happens. But if you keep that prudent approach and continue to build reserve, the intent is to get to a certain portion of your spend so that in theory, if you have a bad year, you can use some of those reserves to help offset costs and never have to dip into the general fund. That is the full intent of doing it the right way.
So, is, is what you're saying is if we don't have enough in our reserve because we didn't do the premiums right or we got too many claims at the outset before we build up the reserve and those claims don't meet the threshold to kick into the stop-loss or reinsurance, that then comes out of our general fund and that's the risk?
Yeah, and what I would do is, yes, it would come out of the general fund. What we would do is reserve that negative fund balance and pay it back. We'd have to either increase our premiums in some way. So, we would, it wouldn't be a permanent loss from the general fund. The employees would have to pay increased premiums to bring that back in line.
That's helpful to me. Thank you. Do you have any numbers or detailed financials of any way of how this worked out in other districts? If they had to do that, if they ran into trouble in the early years or months of this?
You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't speak of a, a district that ran into issues early. It'd be more of one that, you know, was playing that fully insured game and they had to fund out of that deficit. And that would be, you know, Burnsville Schools. That's a district that I've worked with closely for the last five-plus years. And, you know, they were presented with a 50% plus fully insured increase that nobody could absorb. And it was a product of, you know, the fully insured carriers keep buying the business. And if they don't make money off it, they'll pass the buck to the next carrier who hopes to make money off of it. And they were presented with, you know, the potential of a fully insured increase. And they knew that they couldn't do it in one year. So, they're like, all right, let's go self-insured. We helped them with that understanding and essentially did a two-year approach to get them out of that deficit. So, we funded year one at a 16, funded year two at a 14, basically got to our level-set point and added reserve within that timeframe. And we sit here six years later and now they probably have one of the most established reserves of the self-insured districts that you see on that list while still having a rich benefit set and still maintaining stability with low, single-digit increases on annual basis. But it's really, you know, how you do it and how you come to that point of agreement is really what helps the program work on a self-insured basis.
Can you tell me a little bit about how we found One Digital, who One Digital is? Perhaps send us through Aston more information about One Digital because I think we're putting a lot of trust in One Digital who I've never heard of till today. So, I, I just need more comfort around this. This, this is my personal comfort need. And then, how are we selecting the third-party administrator?
Just to go to your question about One Digital, you know, One Digital is a newer brand. You know, we were formerly Corporate Health Systems. We've been, you know, a consulting agency in the Twin Cities for about 30 years. We've worked with the public sector for a very long time. We've obviously self-funded many of those districts. We were acquired in May of 16 and probably the best thing that could have ever happened to our agency. And with that being a new brand and really a fresh start, we're trying to change, you know, what consulting is and get out of that transactional brokering and really provide true consolidative approaches to help employers understand what their risk is and get them down the right path and weigh those options of self-insured, level-funded, or, you know, fully insured if that's in their best interest. But you have to understand what your risk is before you can really go down those avenues.
So, to the question of how did we get there, Sandy, Celine and I, you know, put out bids and received and reviewed carriers, talking to our colleagues who work, you know, business managers and HR people throughout districts in the metro area. And consistently, we're told, you know, I wouldn't work with anybody but, you know, One, you know, One Digital or their experience with One Digital has been top-notch. And, you know, ultimately, as we reviewed bids, found, you know, found them to be what we felt we needed. And they've been an exceptional partner since they've joined us.
I, I again see this as an opportunity because I attended a couple of years ago an MSBA seminar on how a district went down the path that you're recommending tonight. And what I'm thoroughly impressed with is you did do your homework and you have anticipated what the issues are. And the other thing that's important to me is Nate and his team have been at the table through part the whole thing. And because that's our biggest chunk of cost, right, is our teacher's salary and benefits package. And so, if our teachers are telling us we're ready to do this, we're ready to have more control over the process because we see it as a way of... The, the insurance industry is going to keep being volatile. We know that. So, what I really appreciate is that you are giving us a... So, what I really appreciate is that you are giving us a tool to manage that in a way that is collaborative with our teaching staff, but makes sense from a business standpoint. So I, I really thank you Nate and team, thank you Patricia and Rick, and our other partner.
And we'd also like to thank PAT and Nate and the whole executive committee. They did take this action back to the executive committee of PAT, and we do have an affirmative letter from PAT recommending a move to self-insure for employee health benefits. So, I can't remember if that's in your packet, that was at your places or not, so.
So to say, Rick, I've been on the board, and we've had this come up a few times, and have had some members be strongly opposed to it, so it's, it feels like a slightly different shift here. I'm going to work on my comfort level. Aston's going to help me, and you may help me.
Yeah.
And we'll go from there.
As I said, I've been recommending to boards for over twenty years not to do this, and so for me to get to there, it's through a lot of, you know, through a lot of, of re-education and exposure to what's possible, and I think now it's possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your insights, thank you for staying through our long meeting.
So the, the one request I'm going to ask of the board is to provide input like you did about what your plans were for the start-time action later this week, but if you can get that to the superintendent, that'd be most helpful, because, you know, if it's a go, we know where to go on the twenty-second, if we know it's not a go, then we also know what we have to do.
And I have mentioned to Aston the idea of having a pre-meeting, just to, we'll set a special meeting in order to have more conversation and information for those who may need it. So if you can't make, don't feel like you can make up your mind tomorrow, it's okay, there's a chance to learn more.
Right. Next up, it's policy development, first reading policies eight oh one, equal access to school facilities, and eight to ten, naming of facilities.
Chair Gor, as members of the board, I will review both of these policies together, if that's okay, or would you prefer that I separate them? Okay, so as we look at eight oh one, it was last revised in two thousand and six, and from, this is an MSBA policy, and what you'll notice in the draft in front of you, the only language that was changed was just some legal references down at the bottom of the policy. I would say, one consideration that I would have for the board is that generally, most of our policies, we separate the procedure from the policy language. This is one example in which the procedure is built into what we describe as the policy. Either way works, but I know to be consistent with other policies, we, we may want to consider removing the, the, the procedure language and separating that into its own procedure. Besides that, I would, I would add that all of the information here is still consistent with our practice.
Aston's surprised that, that from two thousand and six to now, there aren't any more recommended changes, so it sounds like it's a statute that hasn't been amended. That's what I'm going to read into that.
The next policy that was up for review this evening is policy eight ten, naming of facilities. This is a local policy, and, and I would say at this point, there was no recommendation from staff to revise the language, but as part of our review process, this policy currently is up for board review.
I will say we used the naming of facilities policy and its procedures most recently with Park Spanish Immersion moving from Central Park Spanish Immersion to its new home in the former Cedar Manor location, and it worked well. So it's been test-driven recently. Right, next up, we have policy development, second reading policy is seven nineteen, student insurance program, and seven twenty-one memorials and memorial activity. Oh, we can go back, we're going back.
Sorry, I was, I was trying to find where it was, but in definitions of eight oh one, I think we need to change kindergarten through fifth grade is elementary school, and secondary school would be sixth grade through twelve. Little change, but just want to make, would that be correct? Apologize for the delay, I was trying to refine my notes on that.
Excellent catch, thanks Mary. So we are now up to policy seven nineteen, student insurance program, and seven twenty-one memorials, memorial activities. And it's a second reading, so are there any comments?
Just one quick thing, on seven twenty-one, I mentioned at the last meeting that there was a bill in the legislature requiring districts to make a policy on student deaths, and it looks like that bill did not make it into the education policy omnibus bill, so it's sort of sitting out there in another, it doesn't look like it's going to go anywhere, but we should, we should keep our eye on that, because it, it did, I think, have some, some additional language other than what we've got in our, what we've got in our policy, but right now, it looks like it's not, it hasn't moved forward.
Well, and I would just say on the memorial policy, you know, we, we adopted this because we'd had several staff and student deaths in a very short period of time, and I just, I don't want to mention all of them, but because it's April, and because the anniversary of Evan and Damian McManus's death just, or, the last time we heard from them was in April, and they were found in June or July, about five years ago, so I just want to acknowledge that loss to the community then, and all the other losses we've had, and I think this policy has unfortunately served us well when we've needed it. I want to jump back to the policy seven nineteen, I think we'd said, and this is up for being voted on, so I just want to note that we were going to add to distribute materials to parents and guardians, and I just, when it comes up for a vote, I want us to assume that that change is in the policy. I don't see it on the one in front of us, but I'm sure we'll get it made. So next up is the consent agenda, does anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda? Okay. Hearing that no one wants to do that, is there a motion to pass the consent agenda? Moved by Mary, is there a second? Seconded by Ann, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's seven oh. Next up is the start/end time recommendations. It is recommended that the school board approve a start/end time. I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board adopt the triangle recommendation, three tiers with all four elementary schools in the first tier, high school in the second tier, middle school the third tier, with start and end times as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Are we going to, we're going to handle separately the time of implementation in a separate motion?
Yeah, we thought it made sense to do one thing at a time here.
So, any other discussion? I know we had an earlier robust discussion about, about this policy, but I want to give anybody a chance who wants to say something now. I would just say, for all the reasons that I articulated earlier, I think the triangle is, is the way to go. Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, Carrie's seven oh.
I would also like to now move that we implement the triangle recommendation, or I should say that the triangle recommendation should commence beginning for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Let me give it to Joe, second by Joe. Any discussion about that?
I'll just add that, I'll just add that again, this was a very difficult decision for me to make, because I understand that there are implications, I understand that we are recommending a change for very good reasons, but then we have to delay that change. And I, I'm disappointed that we have to do that, but I really do believe that in the interest of after-school childcare, elementary activities, middle school activities, and athletics, that it is the right thing to do. We want to do it, we want to do it in the best way, the most robust way possible, and that unfortunately just takes time.
And I would agree that it does take time, and I would hope and believe that we could get it done within this year, still, and still implement, so, but, because we have a great staff, we have great people, and great ideas, and forward thinking, but, so, I'll open my box.
As I said earlier, I, I have gone back and forth on when to implement, and have come down on the, what trumped it for me was the sense that we can do it better and do it more right if we give folks a year to get it right, and meet the safety concerns of, of after-school childcare, as well as the other athletic concerns. I think they could be probably accomplished sooner, but I think the childcare, that because it requires some job restructuring, and some implications for our parent families, I think, and, and the after-school activities that present real opportunities, that we can create those and do a better job if we have a little bit more time on that. Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any abstention? Carrie's six one.
Chair Gor? All right, so we will, I would also like to move then, that for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, that we maintain the status quo start times for all elementary schools.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
And now we can have discussion for clarity.
Okay. Just by that, I mean that all school start times will remain exactly as they are right now for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, PSI will be on their own buses to the new location, at former Cedar Manor.
Yeah, there had been, there had been a, a proposal to, one of the options had been to move the other three ID elementaries back fifteen minutes in their start time, which just seems totally inconsistent with the fact that we think elementary school students are ready to start sooner, and so we're going to keep them at their, their current start time, and then a year from now, a year from, calendar year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, if I've got the dates right, then we'll implement triangle.
Yeah, I just want to be really clear on this, that, because what the slide that we showed at the last meeting, and that we originally saw tonight as well, was showed start times fifteen minutes later for our three IB neighborhood elementary schools, so nine thirty for Peter Hobart and Aquila, and nine thirty-five for Susan Langren and the, and the board discussed this, and I just, again, like Nancy said, just felt like that was inconsistent with the, with the, the goal of this, all this transition altogether. It does come with a cost, and, and we, we discussed that, and so we will, this is not a cost-neutral option, but it's a, it's a one-year cost before we then start the, the triangle option, and, and as the superintendent pointed out earlier, it's, it was, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than the current cost, but that would mean only, versus the triangle option, about a seventy to eighty thousand dollar difference per one year.
And I guess if I could just follow up then, that there, in addition to the reasons that it would be somewhat hypocritical for us to propose and move forward with a triangle change, but exacerbate some of the elementary concerns for the next year, in addition to that, I think that for so many families have already established work and home life schedules based on the current start times, and so we would be causing families potentially some, a lot of headaches and a lot of transitions for the next school year, as well as the following school year, and we are very sensitive to that, and we did not want to make anything any more difficult for families for the upcoming school year, which we thought it justified then, the increased cost.
Any other comments on that? All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That Carrie's seven oh. Next up, we have policy development, second reading policy is seven one nineteen, student insurance program, with the addition to one, to redistribute materials to parents and guardians, and we have seven twenty-one memorials, memorial activities for deceased students and staff. It is recommended that the school board approve the second reading of policy seven nineteen, student insurance program, and seven twenty-one memorials and memorial activities for deceased students and staff. Do we have a motion? Moved by Karen, is there a second? Seconded by Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carrie's seven oh. We are to communications and transmittals.
Mary and I attended the National School Board Association Conference in Philadelphia last week, weekend, it feels like a long time ago, but I guess it was just a week ago that we were there, and I think we had a great time, we were able to network with some of our colleagues from both Minnesota and other, and other school boards in other states. I, I'll just kind of throw out some, some of those sessions I attended, Mary, you can maybe speak to the ones you attended. Let's, I can't remember the title of this one, but it was Equity and Outcomes, and it was really about driving toward equitable workforce. One about the role of constituent services in policymaking, so hearing from constituents and taking, taking that to policy, which I think actually, you were talking about how, how you'd been hearing about the middle school start times, and here we are today, so I think that's a great example of that. Cultivating positive organizational change, that was from a really, really excellent, award-winning superintendent in, in New York State, who gave that, who gave that session. And one on lobbying at the, was sort of a primer on lobbying at the US Capitol, from one of the, the NSBA lobbyists, and, and a lot of talk about the, the current bill on the table to hopefully fully fund IDEA, which may be a pipe dream, but nonetheless, let's all call everybody. And then finally, the keynote speaker on the, the last day of the conference was Michelle Gay, one of the parents from, who lost her child when it's at Sandy Hook, and that was a really, it was a very, clearly very moving presentation, but also just a very interesting the way that she talked about the different processes that did or didn't work well on the day, and, and just, and encouraging schools to think about how they plan for any kind of emergency situation, and it wasn't just about this particular type of situation, but any kind of situation such as they, they didn't, when they made the, the call, they didn't say which school. And so people were sort of driving to all the schools, and, and that, that took up resources at the schools that weren't having an issue, that, that they weren't able to then divert to the school that was. So, just some takeaways like that, that I think are probably already part of our best practices, I know we have the handbook and all the, and all the practices, but that was, that was a very, a very interesting, and a lot, there's, there was a lot, a lot of focus on school safety in the, in the general sessions, I would say, so, those are kind of my key takeaways.
I agree with Ann. It was a lot of great information, a lot of things that I can start hounding people about over the next few months. I went to a session on school climate and social emotional learning, city school partnerships, which is thanks to our meeting that we have scheduled with the city council next week. I can start my idea circulation, so to speak. Incorporating stakeholder voice into your strategic plan, which I was able to reflect a lot about our start and end time project study when we were doing that. And I think that we were doing a lot of good things on that. So the first keynote speaker on the first day was author Ken Robinson. And one of the things that he really talked about, his speech was about revolutionizing education from the ground up. And he likened education to agriculture as opposed to industry. And he said that, he talked to us about what conditions do we need to let children grow and learn, create, you know, cultivating the right soil instead of just planting the seed and trusting it to grow on its own. And he specifically talked about, are we providing the right biological environment for our students to grow and succeed? And when I reflect on that in context of our work here tonight, I think that we have done well by our students to try and match when they are going to be best able to learn and succeed at school with their natural inclination to do so, that timing anyway. So I was inspired and I also was very proud of our district. I think we're doing a lot of great things and I am looking forward to continuing that.
I mentioned it earlier, but the bar conference is at the end of this week and I'm looking forward to that. We heard about the civil rights trip that our students took with other students and I just wanted to share that there is a new podcast that has just been started called Cape Up, as in heroes. Cape up, you got your cape on, you be the hero. And it is a series of interviews with the folks who really were instrumental in the early civil rights movement and other interviews and other, and other actions of hero-dom. And I think it's, so I mentioned it to you. You can find it on Cape Up. It is by Jonathan Caphart. And if anybody wants to start listening, it's, it's out there. It's just begun. And he, Jonathan Caphart, is speaking tomorrow, tomorrow being August, April, April 9th, at Tuesday noon at the Westminster Town Hall Forum. So if anybody happens to be off at noon tomorrow, the 9th, you could go hear, hear him personally. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ken. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 70. Thanks, everybody.